But not limited to, I think and is the appropriate way to characterize them, not or. And then number four, with changing it to, with the concern about it being transient or temporary in nature, requiring that the group be intended to remain in place for a period of one year or more, I think is a lot more difficult to establish than whether something is in effect or has a term certain. So I just, I think that there's a lot in here, and to support it means having to support all of it, and that's the part that I'm struggling with.
Ms. Helene, do you have anything to add at the moment?
I was mostly just moving the sheet.
Oh, okay. No, that's, that's fine. I just wanted—
I can certainly say something.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't, didn't overlook you. So I'm, I'm going to suggest, so obviously today, we, we are simply charged with making a recommendation to the city council on the zoning code portion of this change. So, and we have a, a motion to do so. I, I think along with that motion, which, which also had an amendment, I think we can also offer a suggestion to the city council that they continue to look at some of the more substantive changes to the housing maintenance section that Commissioner Rockwell has proposed. Because that's a section of the code that we don't really have discretion over on this commission, I, I think they can simply accept that as a suggestion, and if, if we have concerns about some of the specific wording, that, that can be sorted out in a different forum. So I'm, I'm not particularly concerned about that, but I, I think it, it seems that we have enough of a consensus that we can pass these suggestions along. I, I think too, another theme I have heard is that I, I think, you know, we're, we're generally supportive of this change, although I, I think we all generally view this as an interim step, and that some changes to the occupancy requirements are maybe a better long-term solution. I know, I, I believe our current definition of family and occupancy requirement are particularly conservative and cautious, not only in comparison with some of the examples from around the country that were cited in the staff report, but also, I think, within this metro area, that's, that's a very, a very conservative definition of a family. And, you know, when it comes to our comprehensive plan policies of expanding housing options and, and providing more affordability in housing, I think it's important to look at, at living arrangements that are different from the, the nuclear families. So I, I think this is a step in the right direction. So if there's no further discussion, we have a, a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Magrino has a question.
Oh, Commissioner Magrino.
Sorry, so I guess to be clear, so are we voting on Commissioner Rockwell's—
We're, we're, we're voting on the, on the original motion, which is to approve the text amendment with a suggestion that, that the city council and staff consider Commissioner Rockwell's suggestions as they move forward with this.
I guess I would make a motion to strike the term democratic governance from C2 and the notarized statement requirement in E3 and 4.
I'm talking about Commissioner Rockwell's thing, or—
Yeah, maybe that's, maybe that's a good idea. And, yeah, yeah. So maybe, maybe we should go back and vote on the original motion and, and separate this out. So we'll vote on the motion to make the changes to the zoning code, and then after we vote on that, we can have a, a brief discussion about what we want to recommend for changes to the housing maintenance code. That's fair to everyone. All right. So going back to that original motion to approve the zoning code text amendment, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Lepke Pier.
Aye.
Crownsor.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yates-Roe.
All right, and that motion carries. Let's just have a brief discussion then on Commissioner Rockwell's suggested changes to the housing maintenance code. So it, it appears that at least a couple of you would like to offer some additional suggestions on, on that language. Maybe we could start with Commissioner Magrino, since that is more fresh in our—
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we just approved the text.
Of the zoning code, not, not the, not the housing maintenance code.
Oh, yeah, that isn't 244, isn't it?
Right.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I, I guess I would go with most of what Commissioner Rockwell is saying. I sort of had those two specific suggestions. I think that's a little bit easier to parse out, but in general, I'll let Commissioner Rockwell speak to that.
All right. Commissioner Rockwell, do you have any modifications based on the discussion you've heard?
No, I mean, I think I would just clarify that, you know, this is a, this resolution that has no, the intent of the, the resolution as drafted is, is to say, let's take a closer look at this and try to parse this a little more with the kind of things we heard today from, from everyone who testified in our discussion up here. I think, I don't know that it's worth us getting too mired in the details in that we have no say. But if there are speci— you know, specific things people want to highlight, go for it. I'm not particularly married to any specific here. I think it was intended as a, as, as an idea.
All right.
Chair Brown.
Yes.
I was just going to provide some clarification to those of you who were not committee of the whole. We had had a conversation about administration and enforcement of the ordinance. So because the zoning code piece of this is so limited, all the administration and all the enforcement will be conducted by housing staff. So we won't have zoning inspectors going out to a property and asking for a chore list or asking for, you know, the results of how they democratically came to a solution on a problem that the household was having. Zoning enforcement staff will go out and, or, housing staff, excuse me, will go out and inspect properties regularly as they would with the regular rental license inspection. So there's the reference to Tier One rental licenses. Those are those that, you know, don't have a lot of issues. You know, they operate pretty smoothly. They don't require a lot of additional inspections by housing staff. They don't have a lot of requests for service. So as they come up for inspection, housing staff will go out, they'll do their inspection. Again, they likely won't necessarily be looking for a lot of the specific things that you're seeing here in Chapter 244, but really just doing a regular life safety inspection as they would with any other structure.
All right. Commissioner Lepke Pier and Commissioner Freeland, you have a comment?
I just wanted to say that I, I agree that sending Commissioner Rockwell's resolution, but including the discussion that's taking place, would be really helpful, because we're not, we're not going to settle it here, but I think it's helpful to send that discussion forward, and, and I, I think I kind of agree with some of the modifications of the modifications, but if we could move this forward as kind of, you know, here are some issues that we've raised and some clarifications that might be helpful. Here's the benefit of our discussion as it moves forward. That would be helpful.
And I was just going to say that I, I think the assumption being made is that we're all, like, this is a baby step toward getting rid of max, maximum occupancy, and, and I guess I'd like to learn a bit more about, you know, why it's in duplicate places instead of just all housed within regulations, the reg services department, before I kind of am, am on board with that. I'm speaking as someone who lives in a really dense area of the city, and I, and has lived on a block that's, you know, 80% rental, and I've seen what landlords will do, cramming people in and taking advantage of upping rent, and therefore there's a necessity to cram people in, and I know that that's going to be overseen by regulatory services and that there's other things, but I guess I'd like to see what safeguards are in place before I check these, because I, I'm not, I'm not on that boat yet. I actually see it as, I think everyone tests sunshine and rainbows and good intentions behind all the awesome people that can live together, and it's totally great, and I also see the people that would take advantage of it and make it difficult, and the little things that we are, you know, getting concerned about, about if the city cares who does the chore charts. Well, that's not the point. The point is that it is an intentional community. You're demonstrating that it's, people come together for a reason, and it's been well thought out, not just a convenient way for people that, landlords to cram a bunch of people together and claim that it's an intentional community. And I think that, you know, that the fact that we're looking at it through a, you know, lens of, oh, but this is what, you know, the good things that could come out of it are, instead of going, how would, I'd say it, how would people take advantage of it, and how might that impact already negatively impacted areas of the city that have a lot to deal with already? And I, and I, I don't feel as though it's responsible for us to just make this decision, you know, without considering how that could be affected, because, just because, you know, none of the speakers live in that area of the city. So I just, I think it's, it's a good move. I think intentional communities have a purpose and a place, and I think it's great if we can expand what that means, because it does seem to be a pretty narrow lens, but I also don't want to just open the floodgates to basically do away with any sort of accountability for how many people get crammed under one roof and under what guise, because it, it makes it difficult for the people living there, it makes it difficult for the people living near it, and ultimately it leads to neighborhood instability, which is against what we need to do for creating actual sustainable, sustainable communities in this city. So I just wanted to let you know, it, the comment was made earlier that we're all leaning toward a zero, you know, getting rid of any sort of maximum occupancy, and I just wanted to, if we're going to be transferring our comments to the city council as a whole, I think it's important to create a distinction that I'm, I, I don't think it is universal. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I, I'm, I'm not sure we necessarily even need a motion to send along these comments and discussion. Mr. Wittenberg, do you have preference how we do that?
Commissioners, I, I think if you're going, if this is truly going to be framed as a resolution, then this probably should be subject to a vote.
All right. In that case, may I have a motion, a more formal motion, to, to provide these, these comments to the city council? Right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Crownsor.
Aye.
Lepke Pier.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
Freeland.
Aye.
Yates-Roe.
And that motion carries, and that concludes our discussion on item three. Our next item for discussion is item four, which is the Hennepin-Lindale Lagoon and Lake pedestrian-oriented overlay rezoning study. And staff is Mr. Schaefer.
Chair Commissioners, sorry, I'll take a moment to log in here. Chair Brown, Commissioners, before you is the Hennepin-Lindale Lagoon and Lake rezoning study. This is a text amendment, zoning map change, and I'll walk you through the process of that to add a pedestrian-oriented overlay to a large portion of south part of the city. This was a item that was init— brought forward by Councilmember Bender and Goodman back in January of 2016. It implements the policies of the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth, our city's comprehensive plan, the Midtown Minneapolis Plan, which was adopted in 2005, the Uptown Small Area Plan from 2008, and the Lind Lake Small Area Plan. In your staff reports, you'll see a lot of that, a policy referenced both in the findings and also in the discussion. So again, the components of this rezoning study are actually threefold. One, it's a zoning code text amendment that creates a new pedestrian-oriented overlay district that's called Hennepin-Lindale Lake Lagoon, or Lagoon and Lake area, and removes the existing lake in Hennepin area. Second, it's a zoning code text amendment that amends the general provisions of the pedestrian-oriented overlay. That means we're proposing all changes to all pedestrian-oriented overlays. This is something different than what you had originally seen at the planning and commission committee of the whole back in August, but it furthers, implements this plan. And finally, it's a rezoning of property to add and apply the pedestrian-oriented overlay district. So just in generally, the areas, this is included in your packet, I just wanted to highlight it, these are the areas that are going to be proposed for inclusion in the rezoning study. This is properties along Hennepin and Lindale, from frankly, just above Franklin Avenue north, or just north of Franklin Avenue to 31st Street on Hennepin and Lindale. This covers the commercial corridors, these are activity, these are land use features in our comprehensive plan, which is some of the basis for the guidance of, that we're recommending for the PO. So it follows the extent of those features to about 31st Street and note on Hennepin Avenue, it goes south of 31st Street just slightly to include the commercialized on properties there, there's a bank, a few other sites that we're bringing in. And then it goes from frankly, west, west Calhoun Parkway, East Calhoun Parkway, excuse me, all the way to 35W. The areas on these maps, you can see there's areas that are hatched in blue, those are existing areas that are pedestrian-oriented overlays. You can see that a good portion of the area covered by Uptown Lind Lake are currently included in a pedestrian-oriented overlay. This would amend that requirement and put the standards that we're proposing in place. So with pedestrian-oriented overlay, there's a, a series of standards that are just existing standards that I wanted to raise your, raise your awareness. I know you're used to these, but just to highlight them for the public. One, it's, you can, there's said different levels of prohibitive uses, we prohibit automotive uses, transportation uses, drive-throughs, and I will leave it there. So the transportation uses are bus services, we don't have any of these in the project area. Automotive field services are gas stations, auto repair, car rental, and then obviously drive-throughs. It allows fast food only in the buildings that have been, that existed at the date of this ordinance, a new, new construction for fast food. Requires buildings to be located no closer than eight feet from the property line. Requires buildings to have at least 40% of their ground floor be windows. Prohibiting pole signs, backlit awning signs, and backlit insertable projecting signs. Again, those are signs that are pretty much more oriented towards automotive uses, not towards pedestrian. Limits the length of a parking lot along the street from, to 60 feet, and reduces the minimum parking and maximal off-street parking requirements to 75%.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Schaefer, Commissioner Bender has a question for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify that these are standards, as it says on the slide, that apply to all districts in the city, and I wondered if there were any pedestrian-oriented overlay districts that don't include any of these elements or, or have less, lower standards, if you will, than these elements?
Chair Brown, Commissioner Bender, note, every pedestrian-oriented overlay includes these standards. The, some of the other areas called out modify these standards, which I'll get to shortly, what we're proposing to modify, but they all include these base standards. So to kind of build, respond on your point, Councilmember Bender, there are some additional standards that we're looking to apply specifically to the Hennepin-Linale Lake area. These are act— some of these are being borrowed and inspired from other locations within the city, including the prohibited, including the West Broadway, the Central and Lowry, and the Nicollet and Franklin pedestrian-oriented overlay districts, so borrowing from across the city. Those including establishing a minimum of two-story development, a minimum FAR of one, so we get the kind of development we want to see on our commercial corridors that plans call for. Prohibiting principal parking lots, so going further than just reducing the amount of accessory parking, but actually prohibiting principal parking lots. These are, again, standalone pay parking lots, these are not garages, but these are standalone pay parking lots. Removing the requirement for non-commercial uses to provide accessory parking. So as I mentioned previously in the previous slide, that our requirements, our basic standards in the pedestrian-oriented overlay, are a reduction of 25% of the parking requirement. Here we're proposing there be no parking requirement for commercial buildings. We're also going to add, we're proposing a few other additional changes that are going further than we have in other areas, parts of the city. And this is including allowing automobile, minor repair of automobiles. This is oil changes, engine repair, this is not body work, so that's considered major auto repair. So someone who's doing auto body work is major, there's a difference. The Uptown Small Area Plan calls for the supporting of these kinds of uses. We, during our public process in July, and in conversations with the commission and committee of the whole, we discussed that we want to make sure that these uses can be more meeting the design and not the regulation of their, the type of use. So talking about requiring that the buildings provide, not have doors that face the street, that all storage of vehicles or anything else are behind the buildings, that they're built up to the street, the stuff that require to meet FAR requirement of 2.0, or, sorry, 1.0, and a story height of two. So there's still requirements to build into that. Additionally, we're proposing to require a building entrance within, in the case of a corner lot, to be located 25 feet off the corner of a building that's placed along Hennepin-Lindale, Nicollet and Laguna Lake. So basically, we're trying to get entrances when you're building on a corner to have an entrance within 25 feet. I know the commission dealt with this on a previous land use application, and the Commissioners during the committee of the whole offered some other guidance we've worked through and ended up with kind of similar to what we originally had planned, but we took a long path to get there. But offering that, that entrance is within 25 feet of that corner of that building. We're also proposing an increase in the FAR, so the floor ratio of the building. Right now, we currently offer certain sets of bonuses, one for affordable housing, so 50%, if you're providing 20% of your units that are affordable at 50% of the area median income, you can get an increase in the size of your building by 20%. We get that for active ground floor uses, so having a commercial ground floor, so a mixed-use building, and also offering that for enclosing parking, as the commission knows these, they've dealt with those before. We're proposing to increase that bonus by 5% from 20% to 25%. There's the zoning code, we do this also in the transit station area, areas, we actually increase that by, to 30%, not 25. We feel that this also helps get us to the, asking for the type of development we want to see, encouraging intensity of development along our commercial quarters, which are for high, high intensity development. Additionally, a lot of the, both the Midtown Minneapolis Plan and the Uptown Small Area Plan call for really increasing the daytime activity, trying to increase the office population in non, just non-residential uses. And one of the, what's built into our current bonus structure is that you have to be, have residential units meet any of those requirements for bonuses. So we're proposing to make sure that non-residential buildings that have a commercial ground floor, so an office that might put a, a commercial space on the ground floor, an active space on the ground floor, or, or try to, they can also qualify for those bonuses. Obviously, they wouldn't qualify for the affordable housing bonus, because they have to provide housing, but we want to make sure that we can encourage those kind of uses and give them the same, give those buildings and those uses the same kind of incentives that we offer for mixed use within the city. Additionally, there is a few other standards. One is establishing a base maximum height of four stories and 56 feet. There are, the zoning, the base zoning throughout the project area varies from C1 zoning, which has a maximum height of two and a half stories to 35 feet as of right, to C3A, which offers four stories and 56 feet. The proposal is to increase that height directly to four stories across the, for the, every property in there, so every property within the proposed boundary would have a maximum base height of four stories and 56 feet. We're also prohibiting curb cuts in the case of corner lots, so again, trying to keep activity and make that pedestrian corner a strong corner, making sure those curb cuts are on interiors of those streets and not along the corners. And then ultimately, there is one other provision, and this is to keep people from getting caught in kind of a limbo, our base zoning is also office residential in some of our areas of, of this proposal, and that has a requirement of a 15-foot setback for front yard, and our commercial districts do not have that setback. Our pedestrian-oriented overlay calls for buildings to be brought up to the front, up to the street, and so we're proposing to have a, up to zero to eight-foot setback, so eliminating the office residential 15-foot setback. This is explained more thoroughly in the text, actual text amendment, but I wanted to walk you through it, because sometimes ordinance language is a little harder to read. Additionally, as I mentioned before, as we are proposing this amendment, we're removing the Hennepin area, the Hennepin Lake area portion of the current pedestrian-oriented overlay district. That has one additional standard, and that standard's on the screen enlisted in your staff reports, and that's a travel demand management plan. TDMP, in this case, is triggered if we're any additional building size of 4,000 square feet, so it triggers it for a fairly small level. Our current, currently, we have, Public Works has a discretionary requirement that any time you have a substantial change of use. We are seeing that with a lower level of threshold of 4,000 square feet, we're not seeing that really cause a lot of change in impacting the, that comes out of the travel demand management plan, we're not seeing a lot of mitigation or other things that come out of that. So we're proposing to use our existing requirements within the rest of the zoning code and our work, and our Public Works authority to request that for significant changes. Finally, there are three standards that we're proposing that would actually amend and hopefully apply to all the pedestrian-oriented overlay districts throughout the city. One of those is amending 551.120, which talks about the building facade and the requirement for windows. The, currently, it's measured, it takes windows and requires we have 40% of windows, but it measures those windows between four and 10 feet of adjacent grade. We feel that a window starting at four feet doesn't quite relate to the pedestrian environment that we're trying to encourage, so we're proposing that that window has to start at two feet to qualify for that. Second, we're amending the accessory parking requirements. As I mentioned in earlier slides, the current standards for pedestrian-oriented overlay is a 60-foot frontage of parking along the road, that's essentially a two-way drive aisle and parking on either side of that drive aisle. And a lot of the work that we did looking at this study area, we found that that condition's pretty prevalent throughout the study area, and was something that people found that was, wasn't really adding to the pedestrian environment. So we were looking to go to a shorter distance. This was originally proposed just for this area, but we're proposing to apply it across the city, because we think it makes sense, that we reduce that to 40 feet, it's from 60 feet. So that removes basically one level of parking, so it's a two-way drive aisle and parking on one side. You can put the parking to the back, you can do other things, but it allows that parking still to be along the side, but it reduces that length from 60 feet to 40 feet. And then we're proposing again to apply that to all pedestrian-oriented overlay districts. And finally, we're proposing to require accessory bicycle parking. This is something that is currently in our Nicollet and Franklin pedestrian-oriented overlay, and we're proposing to put it across in, or all the PO districts. So with that, I, we can look specifically at the tech, language when, through your discussion, but with that, we're recommending approval of both the text amendment and the map changes. I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, I just had two, I think, questions for clarification. The first is related to the allowing of minor automobile repair. Is it, is it really just to support, as sort of I'm reading it here, existing uses that have been identified as part of some of these small area planning processes, or is it to support new automobile uses?
It would be to support, oh, Chair Brown, Commissioner Slack, it would be to support both. It would obviously apply to existing buildings and existing uses, but it also applies to new construction. So if you're going to want to build or add on to a, a minor automobile repair, we'd want to see you come into conformance with us if you wanted to build a new project. We do actually have some examples of multi-story, multi-auto repair, and actually, there's an example of multi-story major automobile repair within the project area, which is Hagan's Auto Body on 29th and, or 20th and Lindale. So it's for both.
And then the second relates to the removal of the TDMP. And I, I guess my question associated with that is, it, I, I do agree that that size of development doesn't always necessarily need a TDMP just because of really the, the low level of impact, but what, what is the threshold? And you described this as sort of discretionary by Public Works. Is there not a written threshold for when we do have to require an applicant to do a TDMP?
Right now, it is discretionary through Public Works, it is through that. I think, I know Jason wants to chime in in how it's been operationalized, but—
Sure. Commissioners, by ordinance, a project of 100,000 square feet or more is required to submit a travel demand and management plan. However, as Mr. Schaefer alluded to, projects much smaller than that are often required on a discretionary basis to submit a TDM plan.
You know, and just from my point of view, I feel like over the last maybe two years, we've, we've seen a lot of contentious projects, and a lot of the contentious issues have been around access and circulation from vehicles and how it really affects the livability of sort of the adjacent context. And 100,000 sounds really large, 4,000 is really small, and I'm just wondering if at some point here, we need to have a conversation about, is there is a threshold? Because I, I can think of some specific projects where a lot of us asked for traffic-related information, but the project, I think the threshold was too small from, from the standpoint of that 100,000 square foot number, and then I think subsequently, Public Works didn't deem it as necessary to happen. And so I'm just wondering— And so I'm just wondering if at some point here in the future, we want to have a conversation about what that threshold might be? Because that, to me, is, is really, affects livability in a lot of, in a lot of cases. And so to me, that, that's something I'd like to have a conversation about.
And Commissioners, it is on our work plan to examine, reexamine the TDM ordinance.
Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Kronzer?
Hi, Brian. I just have a couple of clarifying questions. I want to just clarify and make sure I understand the curb cut proposal. So if we take the Walgreens at twenty-something Hennepin, they would not have been allowed to have a curb cut on Hennepin. Is that what this proposal is suggesting?
Chair Brown, Commissioner Kronzer, that is correct. They'd only been allowed on the side street.
Okay. Thank you. And then in the staff report, it does reference a sixty-foot width parking lot and then forty feet. Is the proposal to limit parking lots adjacent to the front property line to forty feet wide?
That is correct. It is to reduce it to forty feet.
Okay. And then when we were at Committee at the Whole, there was discussion about requiring pedestrian scale lighting, building-mounted. I don't see this, and I don't, didn't hear that in your presentation. Can you explain where, what happened to that?
Chair Brown.
Fabulous idea.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead. Chair Brown, Commissioner Kronzer. With pedestrian scale lighting, we had the conversation, we originally, when we brought this to the Committee at the Whole, that was an encouragement. We had a conversation as a commission, with a commission, about having regular, stuff that we consider regulation, but using words encouraged versus required. So we took that in heart. We didn't necessarily feel it should be required. We feel that it might be worth a different look. We have convers, we do cover pedestrian lighting through our Chapter Five Thirty and Site Plan Review through SEPTED, and it talks about lighting. It talks about adequate lighting. So there's a conversation about how that may have to fit into the future. It's a conversation, I know it's been coming up as we think about policies in our comprehensive plan and going forward about what that might be for better pedestrian environment. But the real, I guess the reason for it is twofold, is that we already have some discussion of it in our, in our zoning code in Chapter Five Thirty. And second, that the staff was prepared to think about it as an encouragement but not a requirement. And based on the Commission's feedback, we just moved to removing that encouragement altogether.
Okay. And then two more. Shared parking, can you briefly describe what this proposal is on shared parking? Is it, are you pulling it from the Nicollet Pedestrian Overlay Ordinance?
Shared parking shouldn't be changed. It doesn't propose any different changes to shared parking.
Because I remember when Nicollet Franklin was being through it a lot, there was a prohibition on certain institutional uses of commercial parking going into those institutional parking lots. And I think this is making that uniform across the area.
I'm trying to answer your question, but I want to actually bring up text to do that. Commissioner Kronzer, would you like to tell, describe where it's enumerated in the post ordinance? And maybe I'm missing it, and it's just...
It's five fifty-one point one-four-oh.
All right. It's existing, sorry, it's using existing requirements, then that is currently what is allowed. I should mention, this was, there was a lot, this is a team effort, so staff members, planners, Kimberly Hollein and Aaron Hanauer, and I collaborated on this, and Kimberly pointed out where it is. So thank you. It is, what you're citing is here under five fifty-one point four, accessory parking. Shared parking, shared, the development of shared parking is encouraged and subject to provisions of five forty-one. That is a requirement of all pedestrian-oriented overlays. We're not proposing any changes in that today. I think what you are referencing is both a Nicollet Franklin about the distance to how far you can have shared parking or off-site parking, but also those uses that used a certain parking lot. And I think that was a temporary use, and that permit has now expired on that site in Nicollet Franklin.
So, so to be clear, so an institution, institutional parking lot cannot be used for commercial parking in this proposal? So like the synagogue up on Twenty-Fourth couldn't use their parking lot for spy house?
Chair, Chair Brown, Commissioner Kronzer, if they have the same zoning, they can use the same lot. If it's residentially zoned, a lot of institutional uses may be zone residential. And if it's a commercial use, they can't cross that zoning boundary. They would need something called a transitional parking overlay to allow for that to occur.
Okay. All right. Last question. I mentioned a sec how, I noticed that the land, not all the properties between Lake and the Greenway, what, east of Lindale are covered in the PO. There are at least three pretty big sites that are industrially zoned. Just, I'm personally concerned that we're not protecting that area in the PO. So I'm wondering what staff's thinking is on that.
So Commissioner Kronzer, on the map before you, are you speaking east of Lindale or west of Lindale?
East.
East of Lindale. We, we specifically stayed to properties that were contiguous or touching, adjacent to the commercial corridor of Lake Street. So we didn't go as far deep. The areas between Lindale and Hennepin, we do include all those properties up to Twenty-Ninth Street or the Greenway. And that's because of the Activity Center boundaries and past policy. Properties east of basically Garfield, we're just sticking strictly to the boundary of the, of Lake Street, with the exception of the properties that are in the Activity Center around Lake and Nicollet, which spans from Twenty-Ninth Street, so just north of the Greenway, south of Thirty First. So I, I understand your point.
So is there any harm to extending the PO to the Greenway here?
Harm might be the creation of more non-conforming uses. I haven't, to be honest, staff hasn't analyzed the uses outside of the proposed boundary to understand what uses are actually being, what's there, what, what the impact might be. We've identified several non-conforming uses that we are creating within the project area, but we haven't done that work outside. And also, we haven't announced that we are doing that work outside of this boundary since we've done any of our notifications. We haven't let those property owners know that we are considering this.
So we've been violating the notice rule?
Yeah.
If I were to make a motion to do something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Bree-Lund, and then Commissioner, I think just Commissioner Bree-Lund.
I don't want to inhibit further discussion, but I would move approval of four A, the map amendment, and four B, the zoning code text amendment.
Well, we do need to hold a public hearing on this item first. So why don't we hold, hold that motion, or perhaps you want to, yeah, we can just...
Chair Brown, if I may just enter. I think you should be aware that you did receive some extra information in your, in an addendum packet today. Those were comments from the Carrick neighborhood, asking us to go farther and do a little bit more, both geographically, go farther south, and consider a little bit more standards. We also, you also see notes from the Lower Hill East Neighborhood Association, LINA, who have some concerns there. We had, we had a meeting that they hosted, that I attended, and in that meeting, they offered a lot of questions. We tried to get back to them with some answers to those questions, and I'm sure that someone might be here to speak to that. Additionally, you should be aware that included in your packet of materials, one of the last comments in that pack, I think page nine of those comments, there is comments from the Lake Street Council about the extent of both the PO where it's being proposed, as well as some of the standards that they found that might be, that they had concerns with. I just wanted to make sure that I drew those, your attention to those.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Well, if there are no further questions of staff, I will open the public hearing on this item. And just so I have a sense, how many of you would like to speak on item four? So several of you. I'll just ask that you keep, keep your remarks relatively brief and be mindful of not simply repeating things others have said. And who, why don't we start over here? You can go first and state your name and address for the record.
Hello again. I'm Alex Chikini. I live at three five two five Fremont Avenue South. I am a member of the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself. But I would note that the Pedestrian Advisory Committee also saw this and supported it. But from my own comments, so I live in Carrick, and I frequently walk into Uptown Lynn Lake with my wife and two kids. I'm the person who thinks about pedestrian issues a lot, and I support this wholeheartedly. The changes that are in this, expanding the PO and also adding new, new terms to it, they will make the commercial areas safer, more accessible, more attractive for people over time. Reducing or eliminating and moving curb cuts onto side streets has shown in multiple studies to reduce vehicle and pedestrian crashes, and also car and car crashes. This is really true for people with disabilities who may not see or hear a car coming, or they may not have the reaction time or the ability to jump out of the way. Larger streets, or larger windows facing the street make for more attractive experience and increase public safety. Reducing parking lot frontage also reduces the dead space, which again increases public safety, particularly for women. And by right height maximums and minimum floor area ratios allow a more predictable development system to get more people living in these pedestrian-heavy areas, which is great. I do have a minor pet peeve while you're considering amending the standard PO language for all the pedestrian-oriented overlay districts. There's a part in there that talks about fast food, banning fast food in new buildings. That's a pretty vague term. I'm not even sure it's defined in the zoning code. I couldn't find it. But, you know, I don't know. I kind of like Taco Bell if I want to get it. And if it's in a building that doesn't have a massive drive-through and giant parking lot, you know, I think that'd be cool to do. But I ask that you support this amendment today and even consider pushing the city to enlarge these across the city and add more of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. And who would like to go next? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi again. My name is Anton Schiefer. I live at seventeen twenty-seven Third Street Northeast. I'm here to also support the pedestrian overlay district. I've lived in the past in several neighborhoods, which would be impacted by the proposal, and I think it would enhance the quality of life in the area. My mom lives there, my mom, my mom lives in Uptown now, and, you know, when I go to visit her, it's nice to be able to kind of walk around. So pedestrian safety is really critical to sustaining current businesses and the life blood of Uptown. As part of that, reducing the amount of curb cuts and parking lot street frontage will help to create a more walkable neighborhood. No one enjoys walking past a huge, you know, massive parking lot like the one at the Kmart at Nicollet and Lake. No one likes to worry about turning cars when they're walking down the sidewalk. This district will also create, allow new commercial buildings to be focused more on people rather than cars. Requiring buildings to be closer to the street and to have more windows will create a more vibrant area that's pleasant to walk through. So I support this, and I hope you vote to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker, yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Daniel Rosen, and I am at one twenty-three North Third Street. And I represent Sears Holdings, which owns the Kmart store at Lake and Nicollet. Kmart has had a successful relationship with the Minneapolis community that spans close to four decades. Since its opening in nineteen seventy-eight, the Lake Street store has been among the company's most successful stores and currently employs more than one hundred members of the community. Fulfills the neighborhood need for convenient shopping for families that need medication and pharmacy items and clothes and food and home supplies. Sears has a lease at this location for another thirty-five years, and we intend to continue to serve the needs of the residents of the city for that entire time. And to the extent that this rezoning proposed today will render our site to be a non-conforming use, we object to the rezoning and we question the wisdom of any action that's inconsistent with our continuing to fulfill our mission of serving the residents of Minneapolis at this location. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address.
Peter Pajurney, thirty fifty-five Twenty Second Avenue South. Again, I found the requirement, or the definition of fast food. It's a, has a permanent menu board provided from which to select and order food. Customers pay for food before consuming it. Self-service condiment bars provided. Trust receivables are provided for self-service bussing. Furnishing plan indicates hard-finished stationary seating arrangement, and most main food, most main course food items are substantially prepared or cooked on-premise in packed and individual non-reusable containers. This seems like another archaic resolution meant to keep out the McDonald's and the Burger Kings of the world, I suppose. It would also apply to, I guess, what we call these days, fast casual, like Chipotle or Noodles and Company. I won't be ashamed to admit that once upon a time, I lived in, near Franklin and Cedar across from the Taco Bell there. When I would come home from work, probably three or four nights a week on the bus, I would walk into that Taco Bell to get dinner for my wife and I. I was the mayor on Four Square for a number of years, probably still am since I don't play that game anymore. But I think fast food can be pedestrian-oriented. I think banning a drive-through is good. You know, it's...